All right, let's get this party started. Janine, welcome back.
Thank you.
Okay.
Seven oh four.
Okay, it is seven oh four, so I'd like to call to order the July meeting of the Tivoli Board of Trustees. If you would join me in the Poi de Légion to the flag.
A Poi de Légion to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, we have notes from the June eighteenth meeting to approve. Anybody who's had a chance to read them, and could I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
So moved by trustee Boden, seconded by trustee Mangere. Trustee Baldino?
Aye.
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 I also vote aye. Thank you for taking some lovely notes for Cleveland. Okay, we have treasurer's reports. And the bills to be paid this month is eighty-one thousand dollars, eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-eight cents. And that includes a big insurance payment, so that's our, that's the whopper this month. Can I get a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Moved.
Second. Moved by Baldino, seconded by trustee Boden. Trustee Mangere, what do you say? How do you vote?
I agree.
Oh, there you go. Let's pay the bills. Actually, first we got to approve, so we're approving now. Trustee Baldino?
Aye.
Trustee Boden?
Aye.
I also vote aye. We will accept the treasurer's report. And can I get a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Moved by Mangere, seconded. Seconded by Boden. Trustee Baldino?
Aye.
Trustee Mangere?
Aye.
Trustee Mangere?
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the bills should be paid. All right, stick up in one more month. Yes, all right. Let's look at the zoning report. Would you read that for trustee Shoney or deputy Mayor Shoney?
Sure. Let's see. For the village of Tivoli, from the building and zoning department, there was thirteen building permits reviewed, ten building permits issued, two complaints, two complaints investigated, nine inspections, and there were zero fire inspections, tickets, and searches.
It is building season. So if anyone is looking at the agenda, our member of the public, we have one agenda item this evening, which is we need to pass a resolution authorizing a rider to our intermunicipal agreement between the village of Tivoli and the Dutchess County Water and Waste Water Authority. So at this point, it is customary to ask if there are any comments on agenda items.
My water bill was huge this month.
Yes.
And my living in a apartment.
Yes.
That's my comment.
Okay, thank you. So this resolution, we turned over the water system to the Dutchess County Water and Waste Water Authority a couple of years ago. And as part of doing that, we also moved our water tower. Because if we left the water tower where it was, we would have been giving sort of the very center, a parcel which is the center of the park. We would have been giving that away with the tower. So we moved the tower so that we can use the entire park. But before we can, so the tower was taken down. And before we did that, there was testing of the soil and also in the community garden and in various areas throughout the park. And it's been a long process, but we have a bit of remediation to do as a result of that tower having been painted with lead over and over again since 1938. So we have been instructed by the DEC that we need to remove an area which is the size of two parking spaces, and it's two feet deep. And then clean fill, clean soil will be brought back in. This work will probably not take place until the spring. And so that's that. That's why there's the fence around the park or on the center of where the water tower was. We've been waiting to hear back about what exactly the plan would be. The good news about this is that, I mean, there's a couple of good newses. The first good news is the entire area is capped by quite a bit of topsoil and sod, so it's not like it's, you know, it's not an active site to worry about. But also, the DCWWA had gotten money from the EFC in order to do the transfer.
EFC is? Environmental.
We have so many acronyms. EFC. But you go back into the IMA with the EFC. So we're gonna have to look that up.
Environmental Facilities Corporation.
There you go, okay. So there was a grant, and there was money left in it, which will cover the cost of doing this remediation, so.
So it won't cost us anything. It's not costing us anything now in terms of the environment or the public health, but it's like a long-term benefit in the sense that it like puts a final touch on this long process of finishing off the water tower transition. And it will allow the whole park to be very clean and orderly and fully remove all trace of.
Sort of the industrial use.
The industrial use of the park, which was decades long. And it's the responsible thing to do. And we could pretend that it wasn't there, but we're doing the responsible thing and taking care of it. And it will be of no costs and tax payers because we already have this money.
So thank you to the Dutchess County Water and Waste Water Authority for making this transition as smooth as possible. And also, once this is all cleaned up and taken care of, then we can consolidate that parcel into the park. And then we can start talking about improvements to the park, which are definitely overdue. So all in all, it's a net win. Put that in the W category. So let's do the official business with this.
So that's what this rider is?
That's what this rider is. So Peter, do you want to read the whereas's?
It would be my pleasure. So this rider two to intermunicipal agreement is made today in June between the village of Tivoli and the Dutchess County Water and Waste Water Authority. Whereas the village and the DCWWA entered into an agreement for the transfer of water and waste water systems dated as of April nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, transfer agreement, and entered into an intermunicipal agreement for the operation, maintenance, and improvement of the village's water and sewer systems dated as of February twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen. As amended by rider one dated as of November twenty, two thousand and twenty-four, as amended the IMA pursuant to which the village undertook capital project for replacement of the water tank through demolition of the former water tank, refurbishment of wells, and replacement of certain distribution lines prior to conveyance of the system to the DCWWA. And whereas pursuant to the transfer agreement, the village has conveyed the village's water system to the DCWWA by deed dated as of November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, together with a license agreement, existing water main dated as of November tenth, uh, November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. And the DCWWA has financed the repayment of the village's short-term obligations incurred for such capital project and remaining capital costs through a revenue obligation issued to New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, EFC Water Financing, with such financing to be repaid from revenues of the zone of assessment created for the former village water system area. And whereas, a result of post-construction testing conducted in connection with the tank demolition that was part of the capital project, the village has determined that it is necessary to undertake a remediation plan at former water tank site identified on the attached Exhibit A license area to address residual lead identified by DEC as the likely result of former water tank lead paint as described in the New York State DEC report filed with the DCWWA.
Okay. All right, so that's the business. And so, yes, so we're waiting on a work plan and we'll know more. I mean, nothing's gonna happen for a while yet because everything takes a lot of time to plan. And but at least we know that we have the funds to get it done. So thank you for, thank you to the DEC and the DCWWA and our attorneys and everybody who's been working to sort of push this project through. So can I get a motion on this resolution to the rider? Moved by Baldino?
Second.
Seconded by Boden. Trustee Mangere?
Aye.
Trustee Baldino?
Aye.
Trustee Boden?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Moving right along. The next board meeting will be held on Wednesday, August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, at seven PM at the historic Watts to Playster Hall, eighty-six Broadway, Tivoli, New York, one, two, five, eight, three. And our workshop for that month, for the month of August, will take place at six PM on August thirteenth and at six PM at twelve on August twentieth. Let's see. What's gone on in the village court this month?
I will read that. So this month, the money collected and remitted to the state comptroller, six hundred and five dollars in fines, three hundred and thirty-five dollars in surcharges, a hundred and five facility fees for a total of one thousand forty-five dollars.
Seat belts, a lot of seat belts this month.
Some of these are really old, actually.
I think some of the dates must be old.
Yeah, it's gotta be. I don't know if I was born in that one of them.
They are old?
No, some of the dates in there look old, actually.
They are old. Okay, and the other side, can I have a place report?
All right, with that, according for the month of June, there was a total of fifteen incidents. And there was twelve uniformed traffic tickets issued, no parking tickets, and no arrests.
Quite good. How about any trustee reports? Should we talk about anything?
Well, we could say about thirty-two people have filled out the trash and recycling survey online. And it also exists in paper form at the Tivoli, at the library, sorry, desk downstairs and at the clerk's desk up here. And we think maybe about ten people have filled it out. I aspirationally would love to see about seventy people fill out this survey.
That'd be great.
That might be too high. Some people think it's too high.
Well, they figure it out.
Let's make it ninety. Ninety people, please fill it out. That means if you're a two-person household, each of you have to do it.
But no, I, but it would be great to hear from more people about, and to be clear, it's if you use the service that Tivoli provides for trash and recycling collection or you don't use it, we need your feedback because there's questions on there about why you use it or why you don't. And we're just trying to get a sense of what people value in a service or why they prefer a hauler, you know, from outside the village, which is fine. There's no judgment. But it's only for people who live within the village. And we just need to understand better what people would like so that we can make an informed decision as we, you know.
Figure out what we're doing.
Yeah, figure out what we're doing. So please do fill it out because I think we'd like to keep it open at least, I don't know, through part of August, maybe. We don't have like a, let's say at least till our next meeting.
Okay.
And see, maybe see, I don't know. Also, today is Harry Colgan's birthday. And it's Janine's birthday also. He's ninety-four. We don't have to sing.
Please tell us that after we go.
I will.
For those of you who don't know, Harry Colgan is a Tivoli resident who was a longtime member of the Red Hook Board of.
Town Board.
Town Board. And a great customer of the Tivoli Bread and Company.
Chia Bada.
Chia Bada, yes.
Keeping some businesses in motion.
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, happy birthday, Harry.
I think it's Janine's birthday also.
And it is Janine's birthday. She is the second lady of Tivoli. So happy birthday, Janine. She's also a driving force behind the Tivoli Artist Coalition.
That's right.
And artist gallery. And just an amazing, an amazing person.
Yeah, she keeps it going. She's one of those people that keep me going.
Totally.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Got to drive them going all the time.
So happy birthday, Janine. We have a bunch of stuff coming up in the next couple of weeks, and it's busy, busy, busy. So Friday night, this Friday night, is our July Community Potluck. It's gonna be in the park under the pavilion. And I think it's not supposed to be a thousand degrees, so please come out. We did the one back in June, and it was really sweet. There was maybe, what, ten, fifteen people, right? And it was.
What time?
At six o'clock?
It's upstairs.
I was gonna say.
Oh, is it upstairs because it's hot? Oh, my bad. Even better, we don't have to worry about the weather. Let it rain. So yeah, it's just, it's a sweet opportunity to just get together and, you know, sit with your neighbors and eat stuff that you maybe never had before. And Karen Cleveland, if you're watching, please bring the Watergate salad again. That was dreamy. So that's this Friday night. Saturday is a busy day. The American Legion is having their, oh, God.
The American Legion.
Yes, okay, let me, let me just get through this. Okay, the American Legion is having their barbecue on Saturday afternoon. And then there's the annual Container House fundraiser. Firehouse fundraiser at the Container House, starting at six PM. And leave live music, it's a twenty dollar donation, and then there's food and all sorts of amazing stuff. It's a great party and for a great cause because we are raising money to expand the firehouse, so please come to that. I'm gonna take a little break here in the middle of what's going on. For the clerk's report, which I am so sorry, for Cleveland, I completely spaced on. Take it away.
We sold four hundred trash tags this month. Bonnie, the treasurer, processed two payrolls. I assisted the ZBA on Monday, July seventh, with their meeting. This is now out of date, but when I wrote it, it said nineteen year sale permits. We've sold twenty-one. We're still accepting applications, but you might not appear on the map. You probably will if you get it to me this week. That map will be posted next week on our website, tivoli NY dot org. It's our thirty-sixth annual Village Wide Yard sale. Summer rec camp, also have to update this. We have thirty-five registered campers, so we only have five spots still available. The signups end next Friday, July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. And then I mentioned that we have the potluck as well, so I'm not gonna be redundant.
But you would actually say where it actually is, so.
That's how she knew she was missing something. She thought. Kristin would have said the real information.
Okay, thank you, Chris. So the other big thing going on is Tivoli Day, which this year is August second. In the park, the time will be from three to nine. And it's going to be just, you know, one of those Tivoli Norman Rockwell kind of afternoons where we'll have games for kids and games for adults and, you know, you know, sack races and, you know, egg on a spoon and.
Pie contest.
Pie contest, yes, the pie contest.
Big deal.
Very big deal. Because this year, the baker was out of town. Is gonna be out of town on yard sale day. So this is, this is probably the biggest news in the village. Pie contest is not on yard sale day. Pie contest is Tivoli Day. And then we'll have the tug of war. Fire Department will hose everybody down. And then, and then we're gonna have just a community picnic, right? So the Legion is gonna be providing hot dogs and hamburgers. And then just bring your favorite side dish, bring a salad, bring a dessert, bring a blanket, bring a chair. Trustee Boden's gonna be playing the flute, a little dinner music. And.
We'll bond it behind.
Yeah, we're gonna have a little music during, some live music, and then a DJ dance party afterwards. So it's gonna be a big day in the park, and we'll have the annual Tivoli photo at five PM sharp. So be there and.
It's a Saturday?
That is, that is Saturday, August second. And if anybody would like to volunteer, we could always use extra hands with that. So please just shoot me an email, give me a call, stop me in the streets. Let's see, have I forgotten anything else?
I wonder if we should add to the flyer that people should like email to volunteer or something. Just something I could find, a good way to do it.
Okay, so I'm pretty sure that's it. That seems like a lot. That seems like a lot. I really thought there was not gonna be so much, which is perhaps why I moved at lightning speed and forgot things. So I guess let's get a motion. Do.
Oh, non-agenda items. Non-agenda public comment is, that's what time it is, so go. Oh, okay, Suzie. So hi. You should introduce yourself.
My name is Suzie Morris. I've lived here for ten years. And I worked for, I had a fancy lady, it was a partner, in a fancy ladies clothing store in my back when I moved up here fifteen years ago. And then I sold my partnership, and then I worked managing a fancy ladies clothing store in my back for a long time, and I retired two and a half years ago. And then I got bored, and so I went to the corner and I said, can I, can I get a job here? Doing something that's like the easiest job in the world because I'm seventy-two, you know? And they said, yeah, you can be the host, you have a couple of months a week. So I did that. I started that, doing that like a couple of months ago. So I noticed that the people who, for the most part, not everyone, but for the most part, the people who are downtown and coming to the corner and coming to Chia Bada are not the people that I see in my condominium, one or two, or in the addition or any of the other stuff. And I was like, you know, there's like different, like, wouldn't it be cool to have like an event where, you know, that people, something that everybody loves, food is something that everyone loves. Everyone loves movies, too. And you guys got the picnic stuff covered, so that, you know, it'd be really neat. And I'd love to have like an outside movie, you know, one evening. And where, but it's something that could be like so, people could plan to come, but also people could very spontaneously see, oh my God, what's going on over there? Let's go sit down and watch this movie. And do have a movie that would be very accessible to everyone, but still very entertaining. And, you know, and maybe a little artsy, a little bit, you know? And I started talking to some of the people that I, I mean, like, we have a woman that lives here in Tivoli who was a movie critic for the New York Times for like a zillion years, you know what I mean? And I started talking to her, Lisa, and I started, and she was like, that's so great. Do you know Alan Calder? I mean, he directs, he's like one of the biggest directors in Hollywood. He lives down the road. And they were like, oh, blah, blah, blah. And so I thought, you know, let's just see, you know, do I need a permit? You know, how do we do this? Is there, are there any funds? If there are no funds, then how do we make it happen? Do we just, you know? And I'll tell you, I have a little bit of, my experience in life with this kind of thing is that before I moved up here, I was, at the time, I was living in Miami Beach and I thought I was getting divorced, and it was very sad and awful. And I went back to live in my hometown, you're gonna learn a lot from it. I went back to live in my hometown in Oklahoma, tiny town, poor as town in Oklahoma. And I was very depressed, and I said, okay, the only way you can get out of depression is do something for somebody else. And so I said, okay, what does this town need? Well, all these people go to church, so do a Christmas project. Because I have a theater background, and I can do just almost anything in theater. And so I, I wrote it, I directed it, I was the music director, I made the costumes, I made sets, blah, 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 blah. And so I was thinking, well, if I can do that, certainly I can get people that are interested in film to, worst case scenario, you get a couple of king-size sheets, you sew them together. I've got an industrial sewing machine, you know? And, you know, and we figure, you figure it out. And so basically, you figure it out, and then you do it, right? And so that's why I'm here, to ask for permission or a permit or whatever.
Right, so, yeah, I think this is something we should talk about more. I love the idea. I think it would be great fun.
Because I think it's important that, you know, like the people that are sitting out at the corner can sit next to my neighbor who lives downstairs, who never goes anywhere, and I can invite her, say, hey, come, you know, bring your lunch, here, sit down, and talk to, you know.
Everybody, because we're here all year.
Because we're, we're.
We're Tivoliers.
We're Tivoli, we're a village, you know? People should know each other, not just the downtown people.
That's a really nice idea. Yeah, that's great.
You call like potluck and pictures.
Ooh, okay, now we're good.
But, you know, I mean, just, and basically, you throw up a screen, you get a permit, you get a license to show something like trains, planes, and automobiles or something laugh-out-loud, but, you know, not gonna offend anyone, but not too well-known, but really funny, and has a nice message, nice family message.
Great.
And, you know, and so-and-so can sit on their lunch chair, and so-and-so can lay on a blanket with their thermos, and maybe they'll have a conversation with each other.
Yeah, no, we can do it on the third floor in the winter. I mean, it's, yeah, I mean.
So if I can, if I can get some, if I talk to the library, see how much it costs to like get the license for a specific film or something. And then maybe necessarily do it in the park, but maybe, I was thinking maybe the west side of the firehouse or something, you know, so keep it on the main street. And like I said, I, maybe I can, if there's no funding for like building a big screen or something, like I said, listen, I made seventeen angel costumes out of old sheets that people donated to me. So I mean, it might be a little higgly-piggly, but maybe not.
Good use of higgly-piggly.
Nothing wrong with higgly-piggly.
Not at all, listen.
You know.
We've been higgly-piggly since seventeen ninety-five.
That's right.
Yeah.
So, you know, maybe it costs two hundred bucks to get the license for a movie.
Yeah, it does.
And but maybe I can ask my well-heeled friends and, you know.
Kid can.
Twenty bucks or whatever. Kid can this, you know, for the community, and bring your blanket, lay on the ground, and have a fun night.
Yeah.
Get a date, and, you know.
Get a date, get a rain date? Get a date, get a rain date?
Get a date, get a rain date, and.
But maybe we can use one of the pavilions, too. I mean, we might.
Yeah, that's true. But do I, do I need a permit to do such a thing?
I'll have to look into that. I mean, we have a mass gathering permit, but that's for more than a hundred people.
It could be more than a hundred people.
It could be. But if you're not like planning it for more than a hundred, then you probably don't like need to get a permit. I think we always have to run things by the attorney. Yeah, right. So let's, let's us get together next week.
Okay.
The legislature.
Yeah, well, I, I'm working now basically four in the evenings till like nine. At this point, Thursday, Sunday, Monday. No, Sundays, you know, this week, no, but. No, Sundays, you know, this week, no, but, uh, so, but really, so I have a very open schedule.
Okay, great.
So do you let me know when I can, but I'll, I'll go talk to the library people first.
Okay.
And then if you want, I mean, I can give you information. You can call me, or if you give me your thing, your email, I'll email you.
Yes, absolutely. All right, great.
It'll be fun, right?
Awesome, totally. All right, cool. All right. Danielle, do you have any public comment?
Oh, it is gonna be two hundred dollars.
It is, okay.
Yeah, um, and sheets will definitely work during the pandemic. Um, that's what we did in my backyard. When she put the projector on it, you won't see, if you sew the sheets together, you won't see it. That is my public comment.
Good to know.
Yeah.
Is there anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, um, the main news adjourned. See you all next month, and, thank you.